Go right into the special meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, August 23rd, 2022, is now called to order. We will have a public hearing on Bill Number 11522. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
11522, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-1211 at Sec declaring a resolution petitioner Ultium Cells LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, if memory serves, I think this council has a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, members of the council. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director with St. Joseph County, Department of Infrastructure, Plan and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor. Before you today is the declaratory resolution, Resolution Bill Number 115-22 that would declare an economic revitalization area and also set a time period for that ERA at 50 years. We have done a presentation, we're happy to redo the presentation or to answer any questions that you may have, but would appreciate your favorable consideration of this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner?
I have one.
Mr. Nolan?
Obviously, we just went through this, I think the council's, we just went through this, obviously, and the council's amenable to helping in this process, but I think the question many have asked is, why the rush?
Why such an expedited process?
Why are we cutting the length of the process in half?
Yeah, no, no, and we absolutely appreciate that, be happy to answer that. So as we have worked on this project, really, the first site visit on the site was December 22nd, 2021. We had a period of kind of inactivity in the project through April, there was a lot of due diligence that started in April and May. We've been working on it over the last several weeks, really in earnest, but the company is in a position where they're trying to decide between us and other candidates, and that decision needs to be made here shortly, in the next couple of weeks, per the company. So what we're looking to do is give you as much information as we can in those next couple of weeks. What we'd like to do, and this is very irregular, to ask for suspension of the regular process, to do two hearings, or a committee hearing and a public hearing in the same night. Again, we'd ask the same thing on the 13th for that consideration, assuming we make it favorably through tonight. But what we're trying to do is position ourselves to get in a position so that the company can consider us for this project. It is a, it is not site selection necessarily, it's site deselection or site elimination, but we need to be competitive, we need to move this project forward. We believe this is a fantastic project for the community. We'll have answers for a lot of these questions that come up over the next couple of weeks, but we believe that this, again, tonight is the first step in three steps, really. So declaratory is the first step, the confirming resolution will be the second step, and a development agreement signed by the council, the Board of Commissioners and Redevelopment Commission would be the third step. So, very short timeline, very condensed, again, because we really need to be in a position to get this project positioned so that we can be the chosen site for this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Carracki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick questions, I think you sort of hit it there, but if this were to pass tonight, there is no commitment from the county, other than we're just expressing earnest in moving this forward, correct?
That is correct, yeah. The declaratory resolution just does those two things, establishes the ERA and then sets a time limit, it then comes back for the confirming where you would approve the tax abatement schedule, the tax abatement, you know, the ratios, all those kind of things. And then the development agreement would be the third, and really, the most crucial step in the process.
And with this first step in assigning this ERA, this only applies to Ultium. There would be no other tax benefit to any other development if this Ultium project is not advanced, correct?
That's absolutely correct. So, this ERA is established on a certain geography for this project. Any other project, say, for example, they came through with two or three suppliers or a couple of other people that wanted to be on this IEC Site One or this Ultium Site, those would have to come back through the declaratory and confirming process for future approvals.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Hearing now, I'll open a public hearing on Bill Number 11522. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
President Morton, Members of Council, Andy Castellini, President, St. Joseph County, Board of Commissioners, offices on the 7th floor of this building. Number one, I appreciate your time and your willingness to kind of change the rules, the way government is operating. Sometimes government has a tough time operating at the speed that business needs it to, so I appreciate your willingness to at least begin this process and keep it moving. I think of any project, though, this would be one of those projects where it makes sense to do whatever we can to make sure this happens. This is a once-in-a-generation, maybe multiple generations, project. All the hard work and diligence that's been done over the last five years, this is why it was done. These are the kind of projects that we want here in St. Joseph County. They are green, they are high, well-paying, they are going to bring, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 potential construction jobs over two- or three-year period, over 1,000 permanent, high-paying jobs with benefits, all the things that our community has asked us to deliver to them, this is what this project can help us meet those needs. I think it's an amazing project, I'm so glad that we're part of this conversation. Once again, it's not done, this is not a done deal, but these are the kind of conversations that we wanted to have in the last five years. We have put, all of us, have put a lot of sweat and a lot of our time into making our community a place where we can have these kind of conversations and we can hopefully bring these types of projects back home to our community. So I hope you continue this process tonight, and then we'll have plenty of time to get lots more questions asked and answered in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak.
Hi, good evening, Jeff Ray, President, CEO, Southern Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan here in downtown South Bend. Won't reiterate the points, I think Andy and Bill said it well, just again, as Andy mentioned, the work you've done over the last five years to prepare this, and the advice that you've given us to find companies that cared about sustainability, that were good stewards of the environment, that were great community partners, that focused on employee diversity, that were responsible manufacturers. We think we found the company that does it. You have, you are asking all the right questions, I think we certainly have lots of questions we still can ask the company over the next few weeks, but I think what you heard even was just a snapshot this evening about why a project like this might be a good fit, and we encourage your support of this on the declaratory resolutions.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can I speak?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, this is Steve Francis at 54174 Judy Lake Drive, up in Clay Township. Just as background, I've been, I was State Chair of a major environmental organization for 10 years, and worked in the area of sustainable energy and economic development. I'm on the South Bend Green Commission, and I'm very pleased to see, I'm speaking on the side of pro, although I'm neutral at this point in the project, but I was pleased to see questions by the council, thank you for asking them, on the environmental stewardship issues, groundwater, so on, so forth. But I do have some concerns, and number one, in the next couple of weeks, given that this is a truncated process, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and shared with the public as you go along in terms of developing the agreement. I think a robust groundwater monitoring system needs to be established to reassure folks that the aquifer is protected, and I was pleased to see Mr. Shalio mention that to some extent. I'd like to see the company back up its assertion that there are no emissions, that just doesn't strike me as totally true, because there will be air emissions, I believe, if you use natural gas, and one concern is very strong on my part, that the company consider making a commitment to net-zero carbon emissions. I own an electric car, I've owned it for 10 years, I have solar panels on my roof, there's no reason you can't put a megawatt or two solar panels up on 2.5 million square feet of building space, and I didn't see that done at your other locations. And a commitment to net zero, as we're making in the city, is going to be, by 2050, is going to be completely moot if we add more carbon emissions in the country with the IEC, the energy plant, this one, and suppliers that come along. And I'd like to see that commitment expressed and firmly rooted in the property tax abatement materials and development of that as we go along. There are other issues in terms of, I'd like to see that there, I'd like to see proof that there are no wastewater issues, there's no upgrade in the South Bend wastewater treatment plant, the water from the aquifer, although I heard wells were being shut down, I mean, you're going to be using New Carlyle Water Systems, and that comes from the aquifer as well. So, I'd like to see a lot more detail in terms of this agreement as it gets developed. I am concerned about the speed of the process, I don't accept the rationale for it, I think the company certainly could wait and make sure that the community's questions are answered, and I hope that you'll be open to speaking with me and others, the company, as well as the economic development officials and the county and county council members. And I'll be talking more as we go along with this process. It's very exciting, but with strong concerns about some of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Asked him if they wanted to answer any of the questions. Good evening, my name is Shelley Klug, I'm Economic and Business Development Manager for Indiana Michigan Power, and I just have three points I'd like to share this evening. First, a little bit different from what others have talked about, the supply chain for everything has been disrupted, and we don't like it at all. Among other things, the lack of sensors, semiconductors, and batteries has shown us that improving our domestic supply chain is critical. And as we did here, here are some big projects that are bringing jobs and products back to America. Intel recently announced $20 billion in Ohio to make semiconductors. Ford announced a $5.6 billion investment in Tennessee to make electric trucks and batteries, and forgive me for saying Ford, because here we have Ultium Cells with GM and LG as the investors, and they are investing between $2 billion and $7 billion in Tennessee, Ohio, and Michigan to produce EV batteries. That's all bringing domestic supply chain back home. These projects were welcomed with open arms by Republican and Democratic governors, bipartisan support in every state. These communities that welcome these projects are enjoying the benefits of collecting millions of dollars of taxes to improve the quality of life for their residents. There are now more opportunities for full-time jobs, paid training, healthcare benefits, and greater spending power, which means more economic strength for their communities. Projects like this fulfill the wishes of every elected official and advocacy group. It's a win-win. You're collecting taxes from a corporation, you're achieving a critical step toward clean energy and reduced fuel emissions, you're supporting more jobs in America, improved infrastructure, good jobs for voters, and another huge step in releasing the ties that bind us to foreign countries. Why would we pass on this opportunity? And second, EV batteries are our countries, are part of our country's clean energy and clean air strategy, and I just found out, two-thirds of the space in these facilities are clean rooms. That's dust-free environment, cleaner than a lot of operating rooms, so we're getting clean air inside and outside. The partners in this project are seeking 100% renewable energy from the utility company. At this point, to accomplish this, they will have to buy energy, renewable energy credits, which support the demand for more renewable energy resources and allows utility companies like ours to continue those investments. And third, adding large power users like this one moderates the cost of those investments, our infrastructure maintenance and upgrades, which increases the overall reliability for all of our customers. The future of mobility is electrification, and these investments, these taxes, and these jobs are going to go somewhere, and I think it's our turn to reap the benefits and be part of that progress. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Matt Helm Camp, and I'm President of Gate Chevrolet and Toyota here in the area, and we are elated that a GM battery factory would be coming to our area. My wife's great-grandfather started our company in 1928, and there have been ups and downs with Chevrolet in this area, but this used to be kind of a hub of Chevrolet, as kind of, maybe some of you might remember, Chevrolet and Studebaker kind of duked it out here in good old South Bend, and there was a zone, there was a zone headquarters here in Michiana, as well as a GMC, GMAC headquarters, and one of the reasons is because this was looked from a perception as a place that GM wanted to be. That is, for the last 30 years, we've still done some good business here in Michiana, but that, that, we've lost that influence as a perception to Indianapolis, Chicago, Detroit, Grand Rapids, and this would go a long way toward restoring along those lines of what the, of how GM is perceived in this area, and so I'm pretty excited about that. Being on the retail side, we are most interested in, once the batteries get into cars, then they would be coming to us, and we'd have a great chance to sell them, as well as the other GM franchise in this area, which is Gurley Leap. They own the Cadillac, Buick, and GMC store in Michiana, and both of our families, I can't speak too much for them, but I'm not going out on a limb to say it would be a great thing for this area and the perception of this area to have a GM battery factory. And one other thing that I would say is, you know, a few years ago, when GM came to me and said, hey, we're making electric vehicles, this is the wave of the future, and really, they think that electric vehicles are going to quadruple for them over the next three to four years. So this is a growing segment of their business. But I kind of questioned it and said, you know what, let's see what happens in the coasts. We live in Indiana, we'll follow them. This would be a chance for our community to lead in an area by having one of four battery plants in the US, and I think that would be a great statement for our future as we celebrate that kind of forward-thinking. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I guess since we're breaking the rules, I can say I have just some questions, but I agree with Steve Francis, this does appear to be moving really fast, I really don't see the need to just rush through this thing. And what, the only, I like how it sounds, it sure sounds great, and the presentation looks just wonderful, but I do have some questions, or, and they can answer them later, or I can talk to these fellows afterwards. Are any, are these batteries solar-capable? Are they batteries that could be used for the energy storage from the, from Project Honeysuckle? I know nothing about batteries, but it's something that occurs to me, that they could take them right across the street to Project Honeysuckle to put in their storage. The New Carlyle's got 2,200 residents in it, most of them resembling me, who aren't going to be people working there. You're bringing 1,600 or so residents into, or workers into there, I'm assuming it's going to be on three shifts, but you're pretty much doubling the size of our area, that's going to be quite an impact for those of us who are used to not double the traffic. And, is the 2,260 per hour average five people making $500 an hour and 1,595 people making 15 bucks an hour? Or is the 2,260 a base, a starting rate for somebody walking in the door? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this bill?
Mary?
Go ahead.
Good evening, Deborah Durell, 21677 Otten Road. I'm speaking generally in favor of this project with great concerns. As we have heard from a few of the other people, I think it hits on a lot of the issues that we are concerned about. I'm still somewhat concerned about the use of the farmland, as we are bringing in a project that fits this community, we should not be trying to use a project that's that huge, that we absolutely have to use the farmland, in particular, this particular area of farmland, that we have long talked about, the water, not only the aquifer, but the surface water, that is of great concern. With the St. Joe Energy Center, IDIM lowered the environmental requirements for protecting the surface water because of the so-called bringing jobs and benefit to the community, and then the jobs didn't show up. So, when we start talking about making sure that the environmental and the community concerns about the water and the land there, I hope that we do a better job than we did with the Energy Center. I am waiting for more interaction with the public, not only in New Carlyle, but in the rest of the county, I hope that they do step up and engage in this shortened process so the council can do their work fairly safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary, online, would you like to speak?
Hello, my name is Mary Countryman, 529, 59 Timothy Road, New Carlyle, Indiana. I disagree with moving fast forward on this. I too have concerns about the wages, if the average wage is 2,260 per hour, roughly the gross wage, working 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, is only $47,000 gross pay. And if that's the average pay, then that, to me, means it's not the, on the low end of the pay scales. That's an issue right there, so that's not bringing big, high-paying jobs, is what some may think. There also, there was a big turnout for the Planning Committee, the Comprehensive Plan, for so many people turned out for that. If this is just pushed forward and pushed forward, what is that going to say? What kind of message will that send to all of those people committing to serve on those committees that are still being formed? It seems like this is just being rushed through way too fast. We don't need any more truck traffic, that increase would not be good. While I do agree that jobs belong in America, they do, but not on top of the aquifer, especially when our county and the world is experiencing drought. And in reading on the topic of dirty manufacturing, part of the things, specifically the products of nickel, cobalt, magnes, magne, magnesium, and lithium, that doesn't sound like a really good thing to be on top of the aquifer, on top of our water source. At a time when the world and the US are going through drought, severe drought conditions, we should be protecting that water more than ever, and protecting our farmland more than ever. Anybody that goes to the grocery store, the heads of lettuce are getting smaller and smaller and smaller because of the drought. All the vegetables are suffering. Farmers out west are having to kill their heifers, take them to butcher, because they don't have water for them to drink, they don't have water to water the crops to feed those cattle, so they're, they have to send them to butcher. There's going to be a shortage of beef, because there's going to be a shortage of chickens, there's going to be hogs. The prices are going to be going up as it is. Please do not turn our farmland into something else that will contribute to the raising, rising cost when we go to the grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing on 115-22. Do I hear a motion?
It's unfavorable. Do I hear a second?
There was a motion to pass Bill Number 11522, made by Councilman Carracki, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from any council member on this bill?
I'm not sure, Mr. Shalio, was he here to rebut some of that? Mr. Shalio? Nice petitioner?
I'm not sure, I saw him get up.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we had an opportunity to answer any of those questions, but I guess I'd start by saying, again, tonight is the first step in a three-step process. This is land that was zoned back in September of 2020 for industrial purposes. As part of the Comprehensive Plan process, this actually goes all the way back to the 1960s Comprehensive Plan, is land identified for industrial development. It was identified in the 20, or 2002 Plan for land for industrial development. There are water and sewer and gas and electric for industrial development in the site. This is an area while it has been farmland for generations, it was really designated as a site for industrial development. We, as part of an agreement with the town, the township, Board of Commissioners and Redevelopment Commission, really are focusing on an area of 2,920 acres, what we call the core development area, for that development area, again, as a way to focus industrial development in a very focused area within this area. Sharing office with Abby Wiles, we have a lot of conversations about the Comprehensive Plan. One of the things that we're doing, again, as I mentioned earlier, is we're putting together draft ordinance for design guidelines for this area, those will come before you here in a couple of weeks. So we understand that from a, from a design, from a sustainability, from a protection standpoint, there's a lot of things that have either been put in place or were putting in place, and this project will help move a good many of those things forward. Again, aquifer protection, very important, there will be steps as part of this process to do aquifer protection. We talked about green energy, earlier tonight, you approved the largest utility-grade solar project in the county. This project will buy renewable energy credits from projects like that. So a lot of wins that this project continues, so we're excited about that. Again, I think the company spoke to a lot of the things earlier in the presentation, the first presentation, and if there's specific questions that were asked that we can answer now or in the next couple of weeks, again, I think there's going to be opportunities. I think to the point earlier about the aquifer, there'll be presentations about some water things, we're going to work with the town, New Carlyle, on, you know, some monitoring and things like that. I think those presentations will probably occur more at their town council meetings. We have had the town as part of these presentations and part of these conversations, we have had the township at the table with these. We will continue to do those things. I think there's been very productive conversations about fire safety and safety that have come out of these conversations, and those will be, continue to be explored. So I think there's a lot of things that will happen over the next several weeks to address a lot of these questions. Again, you know, as I think as Commissioner Castellini said earlier, sometimes government needs to move at the speed of business, and this is one of these unique opportunities to do that. So, we appreciate your support of this project, or we humbly ask for your support of this project. Any questions that we have an answer?
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Krasinski?
Bill, I just want to echo, you know, the presentations in regards to the town of New Carlyle, in regards to the aquifer, you know, we've seen those, but it's going to be important that that's also, you know, displayed here in this room to the public when we get to voting on this thing.
Oh, absolutely.
It's vital, you know, you're hearing from the residents how critical the environment is in that aquifer, so we're going to need to see a good presentation on that.
Absolutely.
I understand all these concerns. I would just say that if there was a lack of oxygen in this room tonight, you would all begin to be very concerned about it. As far as I'm concerned, employment, employment is the oxygen that keeps our whole economy going. Everything we put together, this wonderful building that we put together with all these roads and all these other things, sits on oxygen, and the oxygen is employment. And so employment is what keeps the whole place going, and don't ever, ever forget it.
Mr. Shalio, haven't there been discussions as far as the protection of the water quality and the aquifer for this project to go even above? and the aquifer for this project to go even above the standards that the state sets?
Yeah, so, great question. So when the Energy Center was done, there were monitoring requirements that were put in place by the company and by the town that exceeded the requirements of state law. We would look to do same or similar to that here, but also looking at a bigger picture, looking at a broader cross-section. This project, as proposed, it's outside of the wellhead protection zone that is the New Carlisle Wellhead Protection Zone, but just because it's outside the wellhead protection zone, doesn't mean that we couldn't do some additional monitoring for the wellhead protection zone. A lot of pieces and parts have been talked about for a long time. Again, part of the reason why we haven't acted on some of those things, much like part of the reason we haven't acted on some of the utility pieces, is because we needed that project to put us over the edge. So this is the opportunity to put some of those things into action, whether it's utility upgrades, whether it's additional monitoring, whether it's additional water requirements, things like that. This is that time to do that, and we're excited to be able to move those things forward.
Thank you.
Just one other question I have. I think we had wage data, is that right?
There was, there was some wage data in the presentation.
Yes, well, but of course, we don't get just paid wages, okay? Our total compensation is what counts. So I would think that one of the things we want to see is the total compensation data, which I think is very much higher than just the wage data. And all of us work for both wages and total compensation, and so total compensation is the better way to look at it.
And so as part of the confirming resolution and also the development agreement, all that kind of additional information will be then there. Again, one of our partners that's here with us today is the State of Indiana. State of Indiana's been a great partner with this project, and part of the requirement to get their incentives is that wage information. So we have that wage information, we'll obviously...
But also total compensation data.
Certainly, yep.
Ms. Katanzright?
Mr. Shalio, you mentioned this falls outside of the town of New Carlisle's wellhead protection area, but it does fall within the St. Joe County Wellhead Protection Area, which we do have an ordinance on the books that does protect the aquifer. It was put in place many years ago, and there's also the St. Joe County Water Resources Advisory Board as part of the Health Department that does monitor water quality throughout our county. So I'm hoping that they'll probably be engaged in part of this conversation too, and we'll be looking at how our ordinance applies to this. Would that be correct, that our ordinance would apply?
So we'll look to see where the similarities are. This is one, this may be one of these opportunities where there's an opportunity to update some of those ordinances too. Again, some of those ordinances, you know, may be dated, maybe a little old in some of the requirements, may be an opportunity to not only move us to current standards, but also to take us to the next level. I will say, as we've talked about removal of the wells, the private wells, the high-capacity wells in this area and for the Honeysuckle Site, we have had conversations with the Health Department about that. Any opportunity we have to close private wells is always a win, and so in this area in particular, that opportunity to remove those wells is seen as a win for this area and for the aquifer.
I would agree. Thank you.
Any other comments from any council member? Hearing now, Clerk Lee, please take the roll.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 115-22 was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Next, we have first reading on Bill number 11922. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
11922, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number blank. The St. Joseph County Council declaring an area that's going to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution, petitioner, Ultium Cells LLC.
Bill number 11922 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.